Pledge of we did this.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you'll take a minute with it. Minutes from the last, what is it, three or four minutes, three meetings. I read them online. I didn't see anything, but if anybody has anything, I'll give you a minute to look and see. If I see any additions or corrections, make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Can you make a motion to approve, earning seconds, and enter discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move on. Mr. Dearby, Ms. Bates.
Andy's got this one.
So we're asking for Weston Street to have a pay increase. We are going to refer to a school liaison position, and that is strictly grant funded. We got a grant given to us for a hundred and ten thousand dollars, so we can support her pay out of that. And then if possible, we try to start it on the fourteenth of last month, so we could retro her pay back to August the fourteenth. Do you have a copy of the grant that you guys want? How's the grant deal?
Three hundred for a hundred and ten thousand, two-year grant, which means we received the first hundred and ten, we got another hundred and ten.
Are you wanting to just give her a pay increase, or?
Make her full-time.
They're wanting to add?
Sorry, I answered, oh, I say full-time positions. It is grant-funded, so it will be conditional on.
So it'll be permanently grant funded, or just temporarily?
The position will be there as long as the grant is there.
Okay, that's my next question.
It is, yeah.
Now, is that beneficial or come down there?
Never.
Correct. Everything?
So are you going to run the hundred and ten thousand backside and spend it as you need it?
That is correct. Yes, we made grant deliverables, which we already met first year, monies to starters. It's to be spent as we see, however, hiring this is one of the requirements of the grant. Yeah, I was gonna say, good luck. Good luck, skin in that honor.
I see the dollar mark.
Anybody have any questions or concerns?
Oh, we know it's grant-funded.
It's certainly not going to ask on.
Yeah, it's not in our budget at all. I mean, it won't be a part of our budget unless something changes somewhere along the line. It's not in the next year's.
Any other questions? Intertend a motion to approve.
Salute.
Bill makes a motion, be in seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Fugel.
Number one. I just wanted to take a quick second to cover the day. I know we had a lot of discussions about filling positions, and I have Norbren with me this morning. She is our new four-age educator, so I just wanted to take a quick minute to kind of come and give her an opportunity to address the council if she wishes, or answer questions if you guys might have. Give you guys a little insight of who our new educator is.
Hi, good morning.
Morning, boy.
If you don't know me, I am Norbren, so I am a lifelong resident of this county, so born and raised here. So I went to Hanover College, and I obtained my degree in environmental biology and secondary education. So I've actually spent the past five years teaching at Batesville Middle School, so I taught eighth grade science and biology. So I'm really excited to be back working within my own county, back with my own people here. I am definitely looking forward to getting into the schools. I've already opened up some emails and started to build those connections. It's a really important partnership. On top of it, it's a place that's kind of close to my heart, so that's what I did. Along with that, I do have that science background, so I also will be pushing kind of that STEM, which is a big part of Purdue's kind of work right now. So that's something I'm excited to kind of get into connection with, with the schools, and start building those community partnerships and those aspects.
Welcome.
Yes, glad to see you.
Thank you.
All of us. Believe me, Chris knows. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Be a pleasure working with you. Anybody else have anything during our regular meeting? Now, we'll go on to additional or transfers and additions. This is a business meeting. Okay, let's go to the transfers. Everybody has a copy of them? We gonna make, yeah, we make two prisoners meals without an additional this year?
No, that'll be coming up later this year. That'll be coming up later this year.
Any other questions? If not, I make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Bill makes a motion to approve the, or the transfers.
I'll second.
Ashley second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Additional, think they're just ARP? Correct?
Yep.
Call it out. Okay, we got one here for Westport Area Business Association, two hundred and fifty thousand for the ARP fund. Uh, this is to appropriate American Recovery Plan monies on guidelines. I don't know what you're gonna use it for, but.
For light removal to update, um, fat, fat properties for lack of a better term, and get them more usable for the future.
It's for two hundred and fifty thousand. Any questions? I don't have answers. Do you have a mind? Kenny, earn it today. Intertend a motion to approve. Ashley makes a motion to approve. Not only seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we have a model here, ARP for a hundred thousand for the inclusion part. I do know a little bit about that.
How much they spend in total on that, Dan?
I think it's close to half million, though. Uh, I think it's maybe one and seven fifty.
Eight hundred thousand. I saw him on the, actually, I sit on that committee, and I think the total when we started was like seven fifty. And so most of the funded three-year donations is one, it matches your grants, um, so.
So it is giving you a hundred thousand too, isn't it?
I think so.
I think that pretty much gets you.
And there was some ready funding that was given to that project as well, as I said on the ready board, and I will tell you, from a state perspective, they're using this as a model around the states and, and really kind of touting what a great project it is all over the state.
I do know that you have appropriated a hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's been a little, a lot of work.
I don't think they started them, it's the.
Where did you put them at?
Yeah, so it was a kind of a long-term project. We were looking at maybe three-ish years, and so that year we hit pretty much all of our goals, so we're gonna go forward way before, so. I don't know, the biggest thing that we're looking at now, I think Brenda's doing a great job, kind of leading the way, is making sure that I have a material as far as mine. That's was a big piece at one point where there was some material problems, too, with supply and change, so we're just making sure that everything is there. I don't know, once construction starts, how long that project will take, but I just know we're ahead, way ahead of schedule. Is it bid out, or is it a local company doing it, or what? So they're working with a company, and I forget the name of it, but that is what they do, is they facilitate, they keep the buildings.
Miracle Recreation.
What is it?
Miracle Recreation.
Yeah, Miracle Recreation, so.
Good thing I like about it, too, is Brenda's gonna keep a, Brenda's gonna keep an account to keep the equipment updated and keep it without turning it over to the parks.
That will be greatly appreciated.
Some of the stuff we build, we just slam through maintenance, and he said he's gonna try to keep the front going, keep the maintenance and everything else going, so. That's the thing I liked about it. Anybody else have any questions? Hundred thousand to the inclusion part.
Intertend a motion to approve.
Ashley makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Kenny seconds it. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Increase mileage allowance rate. Where we at now, Jan?
Right now, uh, we're currently at forty-five cents while.
Forty-five cents.
And that's been in place.
What does the state or federal do?
Federal is sixty-two point five, and then through the state is twenty-nine point seven.
State's how much?
Forty-nine point, and I don't have it right in front of me.
Where should we be?
How much local, oh, how many toll booths, the DPO, um, first, out of their emails, they weren't going with what the state, the feds, staff, but staff were giving a little bit less.
Okay, we're at forty-five?
In that sense, before you all came up initially to keep having meetings, so I know.
You're taking fifty?
I'm thinking fifty or fifty-five, somewhere in there. It kind of splits the difference between the state and the federal, but whatever you guys think. It's forty-five now.
Do it fifty-five.
Do what, Kenny?
I'm good with fifty-five.
Kenny, earn it. Need a motion?
Definitely, yes.
Do what?
Need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we up your mileage reverse on fifty-five cents.
Danny makes a motion.
I'll second that.
Bill seconds it. Any other discussion on mileage? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kenny?
Is, or is that the first year you want to change that?
How are we on mileage measure?
Well, I think in each, each budget, if you want to set it, in fact, they said, um, October first, or, as of today, that, that's your call, yeah.
I think these are just set for January one.
I think we have a good January one right now. Okay, is that all we have? Anybody else have anything for the business meeting? Kenny, need a motion to adjourn the business meeting?
No, no, this is all.
This one, okay. Okay, twenty twenty-three budget public hearing, about fifteen minutes ahead of schedule. Anyone have questions, concerns? Anything to bring up about that budget?
You already know mine.
I have anything? I think it was turned in, turned in on Gateway. Just on public hearing, you'll approve next month. Kenny?
We have to follow that or anything?
Hold on.
We have the.
No, this, this public hearing, if anyone has any questions or concerns. Don't approve it next month.
Think you need to wait until March thirty to assess when it's advertised.
Okay, we can.
You guys want to provide some entertainment?
Talk about what you're saying. Whole thing managed.
Hey, Josh, I do want to invite you to the next one. Well, I see your face. Ten thirty, October fifteenth.
Yeah.
I'm guessing the main thing for a pirate dinner on Monday night would have to be.
She can't sleep on.
Well, it's, when I get my. Rather than trying to go over your computer.
What I would, what I recommend is, well, to blow up your server, and, and still use the.
It would be a great step.
If we added, um, it's really different than they, when you're in first grade, you're actually. You don't know which camera's on, and they'll be, if you next three of them, I mean, I guess you're even quite, I don't know, a personal one, but, but it's one. So you could. If you want to use cells, if we use a different. Fight to lose weight or resources to that regular browser, it causes problems. So I've been really trying to. Everybody's trying to standardize and use that, or is what that. Does that work?
So I. It's what we use.
Right.
So we want to stay consistent. We look at a company. Would have my whole month off, and also, the mics could be. And one day like that, right? And it's still work, it's still get the up there. Just place, everything was done in cloud, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're at a point too, where like, your license has come out of here on the system, as well as your work starts new years, so if you were to look at something, it wouldn't be a bad time to. As we was related with, to whatever it was, because data is a big thing. A milestone, and what's nice about it is you can do, um, a local, MPR, local server, whatever you want, at each site. Back to one server that we can run in our cloud for login and permissions, and for streaming, so you can still catch the one. But it's, it's different in fact, because when you're recording local, you're not burning out all the rates to one, it's like the high quality footage, but it's only if you're watching cam.
Yeah, we're doing that streaming.
But all the recording out there, the reason I like it is it stays, because they need to be able to pull everything out somewhere, but they couldn't record on the monitor. You know, they can now, stop all their estate, they can ship all that back to one place, they had MPR for all those rotations that all type. So it's really nice, not. So, you know, that's why this is, that's a great sale.
We started our service being at CI for two years, and that included, uh, they've already upgraded our expedition, so our licenses currently. Because of that, and otherwise, we were working on the old ones, not acquired licenses, and no longer, but that little box is up in the corner.
It's been the whole name, I know, I know.
Yeah, no, that, we're, we're, mine never comes up with that, so, and maybe it's forced you in place to do it, we never decide.
When the last time I talked, that was my question, and now.
Not actually got the permission to. The worst thing is the. Gets filled up. And I can see my. About every four weeks, maybe five weeks, then I have to go reboot the system, do any. And also, it comes out, I love the, once it's going, and then you're like.
I always wondered about that, because you have an issue with. And I was concerned there was a network problem between their network and ours, and it seems like unplug the.
I don't understand, I do know it has something to do with. They increase the memory on that computer and not. And it's not a big deal, and Windows requires, stupid ass Windows, you have to do it anyway, so I just want to slow this down, and reboot the system.
When I went to. It's running. A lot of times it's on, but they're running in the background.
I, I haven't been able to really get involved, because it's not really a serious problem. Other than the sheriff going in there and trying to get in, and I had to walk him through the system. Fortunately, I had enough that I could walk him through the whole process. I had a special repair on my. My source wanted to do a warranty, but it's my. Reboot, it just not doing a fine. But so really, I mean, it was, I got a car, I was in train, this was Saturday, and it happened, all the lights were on.
I was walking around back there, I don't know, pictures I took of you, I was like, I was holding one phone, my phone with the light on to take a picture, and it was so dark. And I couldn't even.
Well, it was, it attracted out to, which is. HQ two, and it would make various, logical, it did not pop the master breaker. I would say enough of the search for.
Got stuck right there, twice in the second.
Oh, it can really, I'm amazed it didn't, the only reason it didn't do anything to our control is all of those went through you, for individual DPSs.
That was the biggest issue we had. I was standing there, and that's right, I was already in this. All of our. Switch didn't go down, it surprised the power, it was so much, like the magnets, you know, it's on the gear, it's straight, like they couldn't have detected and changed, but probably all water, it's your ground.
Right.
Changed, changed the map. We made that several times, it didn't reboot, we're not supposed to. Yeah, so we completely need power.
Well, they said, I haven't looked at it, I haven't looked at it, they said on the camera, you can see the flash, and then you actually can see the pressure way it comes across, and the camera tricked.
We were trying to figure out. Door controller. You have twenty-six hours, which is wrong. They were calling, so I was calling you on the radio.
That's a problem. So far, I haven't. The generator. The auto start.
So you're. Is that why it kept running?
Yes, and manually shut it off. We walked through the whole thing, I watched him check everything, he showed me how to manually start it, we have another. Look, he go out and show Greg how to do it too, and he was about manually start it. That's the funny part about it is, is even though that lightning strike, the auto starts, or, or harm it shows, it will start itself. It was that other power. So on Monday night, the generator started, and then it probably started off. So, I'm like, I called Bob at the gym, so, so you certainly know, even though it was in balance, it starts up. It didn't come start, but. The first time, but it did the second time.
That also carried the same kind of issue.
Let's, let's face it, you're better than anybody knows what it did, who knows what kind of bugs get in there? I still have some.
Okay, nine thirty shot on it, we made it to the public here. Now we have any, anything from the public? Anything from the elected officials? Any questions, concerns?
I'll make a motion to return.
Kenny makes motion to adjourn.
I'll say it.
Thirty seconds. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kenny, well, thank you.